Would everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance to the name of the nation for a bone of title? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bone of the title, please. Thank you.
as part of its organizational meeting for the year 2017, held today, January fourth, two thousand and seventeen, at its regular monthly public meeting, held in the Rappahannock Courthouse, Washington, Virginia. So with that, I'll start at the end of the resolution, and the first item that we have is the Agricultural and Forestry District Advisory Committee. So the floor is open for nominations, again, for the Agricultural and Forestry District Advisory Committee. Are there any nominations?
I would nominate Chris Parrish for nominations.
I'll second that.
The nominations are closed. All in favor of Chris Parrish as the representative to the Agriculture and Forestry Districts, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? The floor is open for nominations to the Rappahannock, Shenandoah, Warren Regional Jail Authority. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, that's a position I currently hold. I've learned a lot on the jail commission this year, and I think it's a subject that all of our board members should have an opportunity to serve on and learn more about with regional jail. I'm going to nominate Mr. Frazier to be the representative for the county, the regional jail authority. I'll second that. I had a chance to pick out my, myself, so get one next to me.
Any other nominations? If not, then the nominations are closed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The floor is open for nominations for the Fire Levy Board. Are there nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mike Bennett for that. I think it's, um, it's a good idea to kind of rotate these things a little bit, and so he's been a little bit familiar with that, so that's why the nominations, Mike Bennett for that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Any other nominations? If not, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of Mike Bennett for the Fire Levy, Fire Levy Board, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next item is the Public Safety Committee, and this is also, um, the, um, I forgot the name of it, I didn't put it in here. It is the, uh, one that is needed for the grant. It is the public committee for the, the grants. And they really should go together, they meet together, but they do not have to. So, um, it's at the pleasure of the board.
I'll go ahead and nominate, uh, Mike Bennett and John Lozinski to serve on that committee.
Presently serving.
I'll second that.
It's the Local Emergency Planning Committee, so my apologies for leaving it off. Okay, so we have nominations of Mike and John. Are there any others? Any other nominations? If not, the nominations are closed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next item is, um, the floor is open for nominations for the Rappahannock River Basin Commission. And this would be for the full-time position, this is not the alternate.
I'll nominate Chris Parrish for that position.
I'll second that. We need an alternate, are we going to do that separately?
Yeah, I was going to do that separately. All those in favor of, uh, Chris Parrish, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now for the alternate for the River Basin Commission.
I'll nominate Mike Bennett for that. I'll second that.
Any other nominations? If not, the nominations are closed. All those in favor is Mike, is the alternate for the River Basin Commission, vote by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The next one, the floor is open for nominations for the Rappahannock County Planning Commission. Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate John Lozinski.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations for the Planning Commission? If not, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of John Lozinski for the Rappahannock County Planning Commission, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The floor is open for nominations for the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission.
I'll nominate Roger Welch for that.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? If not, if not, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of Roger Welch for the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have two left. The next one is the Vice Chair for the Board of Supervisors. Are there any nominations for the Vice Chair?
I'll nominate Chris Parrish.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? If not, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Chris Parrish for the Vice Chair, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And last, the floor is open for nominations for the Chairman.
I'll nominate Roger Welch for that.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? If not, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of Roger Welch for the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, I'll turn the meeting over to Chairman Lott.
Thank you, gentlemen. I guess we're going to go through just the minutes of the September seventh, nineteenth, twenty-fourth, October fourth, the seventh, third.
Now, there are a number of minutes out there. I don't know if you want to go through them today, or since there are a number of them out there. If you would like to, uh, contact me over the next couple of weeks, I'll put any changes in red and have them out there for adoption at the, at the next meeting. The pleasure is yours, gentlemen, however you wish to proceed.
So far, I found without change, it could be in the October.
I think we can deal with them all today, if nobody else objects, we'll go through, um, each one separately.
Okay, the first one would be September the seventh. Any changes to the minutes?
I saw nothing to be corrected, so I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
We're talking about September the seventh, Mr. Chairman.
That's right.
Do we have a motion in the second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand.
And we go now to the nineteenth of September.
Correct.
Any comments on September nineteenth, any changes?
I, again, so I know, uh, nothing to be corrected, so I'll make a motion that we approve them, as is.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand.
I'll stand. September twenty-fourth?
Twenty-sixth, I believe.
I think it should be twenty-sixth.
It's, it's, I agree, I think. Twenty-sixth, September.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for twenty-sixth of September.
And I'll second that.
Motion made in second for September twenty-sixth, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand. October, is this right?
October the third.
Does it go October the third?
You said you had a change on this one, right?
I did, when we, uh, went into closed session, I had, uh, the other gentleman, the member of council, and I come back, and the minutes don't reflect any reading. And I asked at that time if the minutes reflect, uh, I came back, uh, while we're still in closed session, and we talked about the landfill.
What I'd like to do is to get those to you and have you review them, and make sure that they reflect correctly, and not approve those today, and have you review them, if that's all right.
Well, there's some change ahead, is that I had, while the gentleman talked to council, I went back to the landfill, it's the simple exact.
I actually have a proposed change for the October third minutes as well. Um, under old business, the Blue Ridge Heritage Memorial Committee, um, it says here, a motion was made by Mr. Frazier in the blue there, et cetera, and the last sentence was opposed by Mr. Lozinski, which is accurate. But I'd like the minutes to reflect, maybe in the paragraph above that, where they list why, uh, Mr. Bennett says he likes the idea, Mr. Frazier feels the support of the county will go a long way, to their opposition was simply the location of the monument, and not the monument itself. It's definitely effective. Mr. Lozinski stated, he preferred the location beyond the property.
Okay.
If there's no other changes and no objections, I'll make the motion, we accept his minutes, with the, uh, changes.
Didn't you want to see those changes?
No, she can just put them.
Seventeen.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second of changes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand.
And the last one is December fifth.
I can just say, uh, Ms. Cosby, that about our schools, that was Kathy Jones that presented the update.
Right.
Kathy with the C.
Right.
And, uh, my only other note there was, under the, again, Blue Ridge Heritage, under old business, um, it says it was a motion by Mr. Parrish and a second by Mr. Bennett, but there's no reflection there as to the fact that I think it passed unanimously.
Okay.
Just make a, make a note there as to what the boards will reflect.
Does anybody, uh, have a last name for Julianne? For Julian?
Yeah, I didn't, I could not catch your name.
Well, I haven't ever really put it in.
It's like a motion, we accept these minutes, that's fine.
And I'll second that.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Mr. Bennett?
Standing.
I said aye.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
They should look at attention.
We couldn't hear that mail, you know, we didn't. We're not going to do November, we're not going to have those.
I do not have those, I'm having technical difficulties with the CD.
I used to put them on the record player, but it didn't pop on.
And by the way, gentlemen, if you see in the minutes, there are numbers and parentheses, that is where it is on, on the video, so that in case you need to go look at it. So, just to let you know.
Is November the meeting that wasn't taped?
Correct. And we have a CD, it's just that I'm having trouble reading it.
Okay, that takes a, I'll turn now.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the county administrator for getting all those minutes completed. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion about getting those done. It's going to be up in Georgia to complete now. So my thanks for spending the time to get that completed.
Thank you.
Okay, then now we've got some items we can add to the agenda, or modify.
There were a couple of late entrants. Um, we received a letter from the Rapidan Passenger Vehicle Funding, which is not money that is needed by this board, but just a letter of support. And there is a deadline on that, so I would like to add that today through your consideration. And the appointments to the Boards and Commissions policy came in late, so, um, while you may want to discuss that today, you may want to review it, um, and not make a, a formal approval today. So, I wanted to make those aware, make you aware of that. You should amend the agenda if, um, you're willing to add those to.
We need a motion. Uh, just to clear up, the appointments to Boards and Commissions policy, what is that doing?
It's, uh, the policy that we talked about at the last meeting, and it's, um, the procedures that you have to place when appointing people to the, to the boards.
And we want to approve it, or we want to amend it, or what's?
Um, you can do either one today. You can put it on as an approval, if you're comfortable with it, if you haven't had a chance to really review it. You can still put it on to discuss and not approve it, or put it on to discuss and approve.
Right, okay.
We need, I believe, is it accurate to say we need a majority vote to put it on the agenda, and a unanimous vote to take action on it?
Right.
Yes.
So this is just to put it on the agenda?
Right. Correct.
I want to make a motion to put it on the agenda.
For discussion?
For discussion, or for whatever comes of that.
I think, uh, for discussion purposes, I would put it on the agenda, and I'll second it.
She would let me in?
Pardon me?
He would be letting in if he just put it on for discussion.
Well, I, I'd rather put it on for discussion than put it, put it off for another month.
My only concern with that, if we're in discussion, is that, uh, I think we have a couple of appointments coming up in February, if we don't have clear procedures as to how to go about that, we delay that to February. Um, I'm just wondering, how we, you know, what the, uh, what, what the procedures are.
It's really, it's really very similar, so I think we can continue with the way that we've been doing it, and this formalizes the process, but they're very similar.
There's some minor changes.
Correct.
And it would have to be unanimous to pass, you know?
Right.
Right.
Either way.
As long as we've got a way to keep our business going.
Right, you do.
So I second it.
Okay. Motion made in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And that gets us to Dr. McKee.
Well, we've really been adopting the sort of agendas, so everybody needs to do that first. Sorry.
All right. We're back to square one. The President, Jim.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt agendas with the changes.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We just wanted to give you some.
You can't be mad at me. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of board, uh, I want to share with you today the comprehensive plan. We worked really, really hard on this plan. Uh, we've taken a year and a half to do our five-year plan, and I thought you might want to take one and pass it. Um, it's kind of important here for you as well. I believe there might be an extra one, um, in there, I said. The comprehensive plan, uh, was adopted by the board at our December meeting. Um, it's a five-year plan, actually a six-year plan. If you look at the date, it makes you think it's five years, but it runs through your, uh, twenty, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three. Um, it's located on the, uh, Rappahannock County Schools website, under Community, and has final comprehensive plan on there. I wanted to ask you to turn to page twenty-four, and I'm going to give you a preliminary of what's prior to that. It's a very helpful document. Um, in the beginning, it talks a lot about where we've been in the last five or six years, how we have adjusted to the change, um, in our environment as far as, um, our scores, our, um, academic practices, uh, the focuses on classrooms, the layouts of the building, um, any of those things that we've done to incorporate change. But one of the biggest issues facing the school system, uh, starts on page twenty-four, and I'm really pleased that this is facing the school system. Uh, we now have a profile of the Virginia graduates, so there's been so many years, I believe, since nineteen ninety-eight, we've talked all about SOLs. And SOLs are still there, um, but they have moved some out of some core areas, and now we're beginning to go back, can you imagine, see, what do we want someone to look like when they graduate? What do we want them to, the skills and the, um, you know, the certificates they have when they leave us? And so the Department of Ed came up with this, um, little criteria, and it talks about content knowledge, which is what we've been doing all along, workplace skills. So we're going back, um, gentlemen, to where we were with the CTE, which was all vocational when I was a teacher, it was vocational education. Uh, we're going back to focusing on skill sets for individuals, so that we're not just pushing everyone into a college-bound program, that we are truly trying to meet the needs of every student. Uh, we have a section on community engagement and civic responsibility, which I believe is one of the higher areas that we, um, that we excel at, at Rappahannock Schools, because we have so much community participation within our schools, and we appreciate that. And then career exploration. And we started back, I want to say about three and a half years ago, with, um, the mandate for the career plan for all students when they reached grade seven. And that's really hard in seventh grade to decide, this is what I want to be when I grow up. So it actually was an attempt to let the young, young people know that there is a plan, and you need to take certain courses in eighth grade, ninth grade, tenth grade, and if you're interested in something, let's explore that. And so we've been, we have that in place for a long time, and we've done an excellent job at that. But if you take this page and you turn to page twenty, um, five, yeah, twenty-five, these are our six basic goals. The first one is content knowledge, that every student will achieve and apply appropriate academic and technical knowledge, which of course would be, um, mastered in things such as the SOLs, or, uh, a project-based assessment, where a student actually has a project with a goal. Most people tend to think of like science projects, but they aren't unassigned by the teacher, they're assigned by the student's area of interest, so students come up with this. So maybe it's in mathematics, but a student's very interested in doing something different, or, or doing ratios, and then they kind of come up with their own project. The second goal area is career preparation, so we are working very hard, um, actually began about two years ago at the high school, Mr. Tupper started a career fair that was offered through the Career Technical Education Program. Um, Head Waters joined us and came in and helped to make that a much better event. But then we also came up, do you remember the WOW event, where we transport students over, and they actually had their hands, I think I remember showing you a video, where the students were dealing with, um, like a pig heart, and they were taking blood pressures and all sorts of activities. So all of that stuff, getting students really interested in what is out there, that they may be interested in pursuing. The next one, goal three, is workplace skills. So I'll be working really hard within our budget to use what we have to really enhance the skills that are in those CTE departments, and so that we can have students ready. We do this some now by doing some internships within the school day, uh, some students working within the school. We did service learning, where students come out and they work with the food bank, those type things, we'll continue with those. Goal four is for student engagement in the community. And everyone always wants to talk about communities engagement within the school, but this is a real push from the Department of Ed for students to recognize that they have a valuable interest in their community, and to start having an appreciation for that early on. So that's going to be something that we'll work really hard on. Recruitment and retention is one not from Department of Ed, but it's one that should be in everyone's comprehensive plan. We want to always recruit the best teachers, we want to keep the best teachers, and, um, we want to have an environment in which they want to stay and to work. And then goal six was one that we added, which was, again, for community involvement, but this one is not the student's responsibility now, it's the organization's responsibility, working with the community, um, agencies that are here. A lot of this we followed into, and I might want to use the word luck, but I would rather say just through really hard work and planning, but when we did that Chesapeake Bay, uh, grant, and we received all of those funds that came in for environmental science, we put a lab at the elementary school, and we take our students from the high school over to this elementary lab, where the equipment can be used by both school sites, uh, depending on what level that they're studying. But that put a lot of community involvement, where we could go out into the community, very, very short field trips, and students could actually get their hands on things and practice things here. We have so many of the streams and areas that they can go and investigate, and, um, you know, solve problems that are facing, um, the world today, and so that's kind of where we're leading. So I hope you will take the time to review the, um, the document, kind of look at where we've been. I'm really, really proud of this. Uh, we did, um, we tried to contract with, uh, Dr. Larry Brooks, um, who had been a retired superintendent, I believe it was Cole Pepper, I think that's right, Ms. Johnson, or Cole Pepper. And he was such a fine gentleman, and he actually teaches at the college level, doing comprehensive planning. So he came in and went up a penny for any of his work, so he worked with us through this year and a half. We had a huge committee, um, when you open the document, the beginning, it has all of the community participants, and so we had several meetings of what was important to us in Rappahannock, uh, from the community standpoint, from the student's standpoint, from the teacher's standpoint, and from the school board's standpoint. And so I'm just real pleased with this. I think, um, it'll be a good review later. It goes over all of our demographics, um, what we have, the, the special, um, staff development that we've incorporated, that we will continue to use, and I think it shows you how hard-earned money has gone, um, into the school system, and what you're getting out of it, and I just think you're going to be real pleased. But again, a pathway for us to make that six years. So I want to share that, and again, for the community. So I want to share that, and again, for the community, if you want to go to the Rappahannock, um, website, it is available there for everyone. Do y'all have any questions? And Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
I have a comment, and that is that, uh, a couple of families have moved into the county last year and are very tickled with the, um, school system there.
Thank you, sir. We're very, very pleased. And on that, I will also add, you know, we did what's meant to do fit grant through, um, Volcare Path, um, Foundation. That has made a huge difference. The board kind of challenged me to see how much participation I could get into the schools. And we are way up in numbers on that. So the community's getting involved, it's not costing us a dime. We're using the facilities we have, it's paying for the staffing for that. We've got nutrition assistance coming on board. And so that has been huge, and we are getting ready to submit a very, um, large second addition to that grant in hopes that we will get that for the community. So that, again, in my mind, is one of the great ways that we have brought together a community that maybe doesn't have children, a community that does have children, and brought them in together to the school system, because we have beautiful schools, some to be very proud of. And, um, so we're real excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is public comment, and this is an opportunity for anyone wishing to speak, and they do so. Raise your hand to be recognized. We have a sign-up sheet, some people. After recognized, you can speak on any topic, direct your comments to the board, and try to limit your comments to three to five minutes. And if you need to speak a second time after everyone else has gone through the opportunity of speaking, then you can speak again. So I'd like to declare a public comment open. First one, the only one on our list.
Well, at least I have the system. Uh, Paige Glenn, Jackson District. Gentlemen, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to address you today concerning the issue of the county's workforce management. First, I request that you listen to understand rather than listen to reply. Second, I want to emphasize that I'm not criticizing any of the county employees. My experience is that they are quality people trying to do a good job. I'm pointing out that the board's poor leadership and poor management practices limit the employee's performance and consequently increases expenses and/or limits employee performance. I postulate that if you provided clear guidance to the workforce and leveraged their capabilities, the efficiency of the county government operations would significantly increase. As I'm sure you recall, I have been critical of the county's financial management practices and high overhead expenses. The response primarily from Mr. Lozinski has been, "Our workforce is at a tipping point," that's a quote, "and this isn't the federal government." Now, I don't mean to single him out just because he has the courage to reply. I believe his comments are indicative of the board's attitude. That attitude implies that the board believes the county workforce is functioning at a high level and that the management principles I've suggested don't apply. It also implies that the board doesn't understand how the board's management practices are continuing, contributing to the situation. Currently, the county has forty-four full-time employees, thirty part-time employees, and roughly fifty citizens that are on various boards without financial compensation. That, of course, does not include the hundred and eighty fire and rescue volunteers or the school employees. All in all, that's a good-sized enterprise deserving of generally accepted management practices. My investigation revealed that generally accepted workforce management practices are not in place. Specifically, employee duties, responsibilities, and authorities are not clearly defined. There are only four employees that are under contract. There are only five position descriptions, and those documents do not meet generally accepted standards. Employees are not given clear performance goals, standards, or incentives to improve. There are no specific performance evaluations, there are no periodic performance evaluations of employees. There is no workload management system. There are no clear defined chains of command, there isn't even an organization chart. Case in point, we've all heard you debate on who the county attorney works for, yet to hear a clear answer. There is an employee benefits document, but no employee policy document. I've heard of a grievance procedure document, but it would appear most employees are unaware of its existence. So without any empirical data, how do you know how efficiently the county workforce is performing? More or less, if it is at a tipping point? And without that, how do you build a realistic budget? I, like so many citizens, like to walk into the county office, offices, and do our business quickly without standing in a line. But that means not every employee is busy all the time, although I'm sure they are multitasking their duties. So why couldn't assets be temporarily mobilized to fulfill the critical task of producing the meeting minutes, particularly when the minutes were related to pending litigation? Without defined personnel policies, how would you handle a problem employee without opening up the county to potential litigation liability from the Virginia Employment Com- uh, Commission? In regards to the management practice standards, uh, to which the county should be held, I'm not expecting federal government standards, not by any means. I'd like you to meet the same standard as perhaps the childcare business here in town. To maintain their state certification, they are required to have many of these personnel management tools in place. Let's take Ms. Kaiser's contract as an example. Again, I'm not commenting on her performance. Her primary duties are handled by a reference to the state code that is general language at best. There is no prioritization of the numerous tasks, more or less a list of everything she's expected to do. Everyone knows that her workload is unmanageable. I'm confident that she could be more effective if she had a clear list of expectations. Do you at least owe her, owe it to her to document her priorities? By the way, you were in breach of her contract for not providing her a vehicle as required. Perhaps revising her contract would be a good place to start. Gentlemen, your workforce management problems are one of the reasons your overhead rate is so high. Despite Mr. Lozinski's defense of your practices, you are not effectively utilizing your workforce. This situation also creates an accountability problem. You need help, and as always, I offer my services free of charge. I realize you don't like me because of my tell-it-as-it-is style, but please get professional help from someone. Thank you very much, and Happy New Year.
Would you like that?
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Would you like one? You don't have to type all that?
Thank you.
Sure, I'm going to save one for the news.
Anyone else here to speak? Oh, there you are, Pete.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year also. Uh, this is an observation, no criticism of the tone of the meeting. This is a very way to start two thousand seventeen compared to two thousand sixteen, the ranker that we had. Thirty-three, thirty-four years ago, the previous county zoning administrator held fast to a rule that fifty percent of the property could not exceed fourteen percent slope in order to build on the top of that hill. And then the leaves fell this year, and I started looking at those things. We're starting to, we're going to approach Mohon Drive in California here in the next five or ten years. These are sacred mountains. I'm a property rights guy, whatever goes on a property, we're entitled to it. But I'd like an observation as to what happened over the last thirty-three years. If you look around through these, these hills, there's no way that that rule applies, that fifty percent of that land is less than fourteen percent gray. We had to tear it up through the world, slope towards a river, nowhere near as drastic as that. But the hills are getting pretty current, and, uh, they're intrusive. Nobody's trying to sublimate them, it's just, from here, the lights are on. I could look down the valley, they're looking up at me. So just an observation, I'd like to find out what happened over those, over that time period, and if that rule still applies, if it could be enforced. If not, drive out to LA to Mohon Drive and see what we've got coming. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Anyone else? Public comment is closed. Do we have a treasure report?
The treasure reports are out on board docs if you'd like to see them. Uh, we are currently at six months, or halfway through our fiscal year, which means that our departmental budget should be showing at fifty percent of their budgets, and we're at an average of eighty-five point seventeen percent, so that's good, means that we're on target. Um, we've collected ninety-six point thirty-three percent of our revenue, based on the recent taxes that we've just taken in. Our bank balance for the month was ten million, three hundred and twelve compared to last year at nine million, three twenty-six. So that's a difference of nine hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars that we have in the bank compared to last year. Um, in just a moment, I'm going to ask you to, um, consider a budget item that we have advertised for. So it has been approved to be in our budget. It was someone that had sent their letter in, um, to ask for a donation and didn't get caught in the budget, and they've since come in. If you remember, they were here at the public hearing for Aging Together. So we'll look at that, but the one thing I do want to add, which I know that Mr. Fraser has reiterated, is that we did add a hundred thousand dollar litigation fund, and basically it is unfunded at this point. So I've been keeping an eye on our revenue, we're not where we should be to know that we're at a fully funded status, and, um, ask you to keep that in mind as you think about, um, funding for Aging Together. Uh, under the litigation fund, we have seventy-five thousand dollars remaining. We've spent twenty-five thousand of it, um, so, um, we will need to fund the funding for that. So that's our current financial status. So we'll do the accounts payable next, and then we'll talk about the Aging Together. The accounts payable is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, oh, thirty-four, point seventy-four. Mr. Lozinski, did you get your answer?
Yeah, just, yes, I just checked my email. Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of questions just on some of these line items. It's related to fire and rescue apparatus and insurance payments, and I got an answer from the treasurer, so I'm, I'm fine with that. My, my question's been answered.
I'll make the motion that we pay these bills if nobody has any objections.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second to approve the accounts, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye?
Upstanding.
Upstanding.
Upstanding, yes.
Aging Together, inappropriate.
Mm-hmm. Um, this is the request from Aging Together. Again, it came in through the budget, and it was not approved during the, during the budgeting process. Um, we did receive, by the way, an eight thousand dollar refund from our insurance carriers, from BML. So we did receive that, and it is, uh, in the general fund. So that is money that we were not expecting that we do have available. But again, we still have the hundred thousand dollar litigation fund. If you choose to do this, you would be taking the money out of the general fund and placing it in one hundred dash four dash oh five one oh one dash five zero zero four zero 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 for seventy-five hundred dollars was their request. And then they would be up again and be eligible to go through our budgeting process again this year and ask for the seventy-five hundred dollars, or whatever they deem appropriate for next year.
What can they do with the seventy-five hundred dollars?
Um, they use it for different funding mechanisms for, um, the Aging Together, whether it's transportation to get them to and from, uh, doctor's visits to Walmart to get their medications. So they provide a lot of, a lot of transportation for them.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve this. I think Aging Together provides pretty fantastic services to the community and to the county. It would assume that they wouldn't miss this going into the next budget cycle.
Right.
But, uh, especially given that we've found some money in there to do this, and given what I think is the outstanding mission, uh, and what they do for us, I'll make the motion to move that seventy-five hundred dollars you're spending, or give them that seventy-five hundred dollars. It's actually writing them a check for seventy-five hundred dollars.
That's correct.
I believe we had approved that before, we just forgot to write the check, please?
No, they sent it in, but it got lost in the transition, so it was never really put in the budget. We did put it in the public hearing, that gave us permission to add the funding, but now it's a point of actually funding it, or you could check.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion carried. Presentation.
Is that clear or one, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Special moment, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay. I don't know, I can't wait to join this. I'd love to see you without your uniform on.
Nice to see you.
You said this is your second day of retirement, should I read?
Yes, my second full day of retirement.
Yes, it looks like you're just about.
I am.
We have a resolution that we had drawn up for Mr. Northup, and if you don't mind, I'll read it. Wherein is much Jim Northup is celebrating his retirement after a successful thirty-six-year career with the National Park Service. Whereas Mr. Northup has given unselfishly of his time, talent, and passion toward the mission and objective of the Shenandoah National Park and for the benefit of Rappahannock County and other counties surrounding the park. And whereas Jim has worked diligently to provide the leadership, creativity, and resourcefulness perpetuating the park and its partnerships throughout our entire region. And whereas, because of his individual and joint efforts, the Shenandoah National Park is widely recognized as one of the premier national parks for which Rappahannock County is proud to have adjacent to our county border. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Rappahannock County that we do hereby publicly thank him for his many efforts of preservation, conservation, and partnerships that exist due to his efforts and dedication. And upon his retirement, we welcome him as a full-time resident of our county. So be it further resolved, and have this resolution be spread across the minute book of the Board of Supervisors of Rappahannock County, and that a presentation copy be provided to Jim with suitable ceremony of respect and appreciation of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors and our citizens. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I could just take a moment, thank you very much, this is a great honor and I really appreciate it. I've had a wonderful career with the National Park Service and it's just been my privilege to be the superintendent of Shenandoah National Park for the last four years. And I appreciate so much the friendship that we've had with Rappahannock County and your support for the park and so thank you so much. I know that relationship will continue. I think many of you know Jennifer Flynn, who has been the deputy superintendent at Shenandoah for about seven years, will be the acting superintendent upon my retirement. And I think there's a very good chance that Jennifer will get the job on a permanent basis. I would expect that announcement to come fairly soon about the selection of the new superintendent. And so, I will certainly encourage my successor to reach out and maintain the wonderful relationship we've had with Rappahannock County. So, thank you so much, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. You're on your retirement.
I already am.
Next item is Go Virginia, and that's Colin Cawthon.
Good afternoon, happy new year to everyone, thanks for giving me some time today. I'll let Ron hand those out, and I have plenty of extra copies, which is in the office. Hi, and first of all, thank you all so much for having me this afternoon. I'm Helen Cawthon, I'm president of Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development. That's the regional economic development organization for all of Planning District Ten and Planning District Nine, except for Rappahannock and Fauquier County. I work a lot with your counterparts in the rest of the region. We also are the umbrella organization, I'm executive director for Piedmont Workforce Network, and I certainly want to take the time to thank Ron Fraser for serving on the council and representing Rappahannock County. And also, you may be pleased to know that one of your residents, Steve Ray, who's an attorney, is actually chairman, a co-chairman of the Piedmont Workforce Network Board right now. So both Ron and Steve are active participants in the workforce development initiative for all of Planning District Nine and Ten. Go Virginia is a new program that the state approved last spring. Have any of you seen presentations on it already? I don't want to, so some of you have, few of you have, okay. Anyway, it's a new program. The idea is to incentivize localities working together on economic development projects. So the thought is that initially, the amount was thirty million dollars will be available, half of it based, will be assigned to the regions based on population, half will be competitive statewide. Now, the governor's budget is twenty-one million, so we'll see what happens, we'll know in about a month, given that the General Assembly's starting now. But essentially, there'll be twenty to thirty million dollars available to incentivize localities to work together. Just so you all know, a few key points, they don't, no locality must participate, it's totally voluntary, at least two localities must be working together to qualify for funds. We are helping as a partnership board, basically, there's no regional council, so there's no organization for this to take place yet. So as a regional economic development organization, our board basically volunteered to say, look, we'll be the lead organization, we aren't going to charge anybody anything, we're going to try to get this thing kicked off in the best way possible. So we've got a planning team that's working. Now, we are doing our outreach to get members of that council. Just so you all know, we're happy to provide the staff support to that council, it'll be like Piedmont Workforce Network, where the council and the board are really separate from the partnership board. We are basically the umbrella for those activities so that they don't have to have their own five and one C three, it certainly saves a lot of money and resources to just have an existing organization do that versus a new organization. The other thing you all need to know is we are collaborating with both planning districts extremely closely. So Rappahannock, Rapidan Regional Commission, I believe George, Roger, you served on that, and you've been serving, I think, is that right? On the RRC?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's, I thought you had been on that. So essentially, with the RRC, Patrick Moni will be handling a big chunk of this for us, collaborating with us. And in fact, if there, when there's money to hire staff, it won't be for time staff, even part-time staff, we're going to look to both those planning districts, we're not going to hire new people. So just so you all know, this is really a collaborative effort. How it's going to work is the planning districts, so RRC for you all, they are handling the selection of an elected official to represent Planning District Nine, they are handling the selection of a county administrator to represent Planning District Nine. And frankly, the regional council will basically accept whoever they decide. So that planning district will decide those two positions. And also, we expect Patrick Moni to also serve as director of the RRC. Same thing will happen with the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. On the private sector, we also have seats for two of the three community colleges. You all will be pleased to know that President Lord Fairfax Community College has already agreed to serve and put her name forth, as well as Frank Freeman of Piedmont Virginia Community College. UVA will have a seat. And then on the private sector side, we'll have twelve private sector representatives. Four will be recommended by chambers of commerce. So we're reaching out very strongly to all of the chambers, because we don't know every single wonderful business leader in the whole region. So what we've said is, hey, chambers, you get four spots, they have to be, those four spots have to be someone nominated by a chamber. Chambers can nominate multiple people, but that gets Fauquier, which, you know, I don't know as many private sector leaders in Fauquier or Rappahannock as I do the rest of the region. So that gets that chamber, as an example, very active in trying to find a good leader for us and participate actively, which is very important for this to be successful. We also have five at-large seats. What I've given you today is really the at-large packets. So the first couple of pages are explanation, the next couple of pages are an application form, and in both the audience, you wear this too, we welcome self-nominations as well. We really want a private sector business people, is what we're looking for. On page four or the back of page two, why should this person be selected? That is because we have to justify and we submit all this stuff to the state, why these people are being chosen, that's bullet points, that's not an essay why an individual should be selected. So don't let that make you nervous, it's just really saying, this person's been involved with the chamber for ten years, or been a business leader in this community for X amount of years, that kind of thing, just to give us some information to someone we don't know at all. The other thing I thought you might be interested in is the last page, which is the boundaries, it shows the different populations of each of the nine regions. And so you get a feel for that. And so how you can help, and I'm happy to answer any questions, is if you'd like to serve and elect official, please contact Patrick Moni and let him know. If Debbie would be, or Deborah would be interested in serving, she could also let Patrick Moni know if you all would like to be really active with this. If you have ideas of at-large private sector folks to recommend, I'm happy to reach out to them, you can reach out to them and copy me and say Helen's happy to explain it more, any way I can help recruit folks from throughout the region, I'm delighted to do that. Also, we, if you all, one of the things that some of the counties have done is actually adopted a resolution in support of the partnership kind of overseeing this process. That was in part to kind of ward off any challenges, we really want to look like we're all working together. Once the regional council's formed, that regional council will decide how it's going to work. We're just trying to get it started, just so you all are perfectly clear. And then also help us come up with ideas of good projects. So this could be, it could be something like a regional industrial park, which I don't think all of our localities would be interested in, but somewhere. It could be entrepreneurship or small business, some kind of formal offering for them. It could be workforce development, skills training or development in a specific area. After we form the regional council, which again, the deadline's January twentieth, and so we hope to have that formed in early February, the council will get together and their first order of business will really to get started developing a regional economic development plan. So we'll have an economic development plan, which frankly, neither Planning District Commission has right now. We're hoping that we'll have enough funding from the state, the amounts, it was five hundred thousand, the governor dropped it to a hundred thousand, and we feel pretty confident it'll be at least two fifty or three hundred, which is really what you need to hire the type of consultants you need to do this kind of thing. So that would be the next step, and again, you all will be asked whether you're participating formally in the council, you certainly, Rappahannock will certainly be asked to participate with that economic development planning. So a lot of information, really quickly, I'm glad to answer any questions now or later, but just really appreciate the opportunity to be sure you all know about what's going on.
So what are the deadlines for submission nomination, January twentieth?
Yes, January twentieth. I'm not sure, I should have asked Patrick before today, I did not remember to do that. I don't know what your PDC schedule is for their selection, but it'll be similar, it'll be this month.
Any other question? All right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us all within the limits.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ron, for your continued attendance at all meetings. We appreciate it.
Broadbanding committee update.
Mr. Chairman, broadband committee had its kickoff meeting, it's on December the sixth. Please report, we had a hundred percent attendance by committee members. Had an opportunity to define, go through the mission statement and the goals of the committee, those are in the process of being tweaked a little bit, and I owe that report back to the board as far as what those, those will look like, again, not big changes, just small tweaks. We decided to break up into, form five different groups to go off and do research in particular areas. Those five groups include assessing our current situation, what the emerging wants and needs of the community may be, what some of the best practices and initiatives are out there. Fourth one, emerging alternatives. And lastly, to do some homework on where we can get some funding and find some money for this. For the holidays, there really hadn't been a whole lot done. We just started communicating again here just after the first of the year, I think our next meeting, we floated a couple of dates around, we're in late January, twenty-six, twenty-seven timeframe. Hopefully, the groups will begin to gather between now and then to start doing a little bit of research. So, we're hoping to report out to the board, we don't want this to just go on and on, be another committee that just meets for the sake of meeting. We're hoping to have something back to the board, some kind of final form by late spring, autumn, or early summer, in the form of a committee report. Open for any questions, members may have.
Any questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Agenda policy is before you, there were some comments last time that have been added to the document, and what I added has been added in purple. The first item that came under chapter thirty, article one, was to say that the agenda would be done three business days prior to a regularly scheduled meeting versus five, so my goal would still be to get it done in five days, but it would give us a little leeway. It would still be emailed and still be out to you on Wednesday before the meeting. If you look at the bottom of page three, such devices will be turned on, unplugged, and/or removed from the room when the Board of Supervisors retire into executive session, and no flash or lighting which may be distracting is permissible. As we discussed, I think Mr. Fraser, that was yours. There's a little bit of confusion, so I clarified, by a board member or by a citizen, as there are different rules, I think, Mr. Fraser, you asked about that. So, I put in the expectations for the board and for the citizen. And then on the last page in purple, I added informational updates or correspondence could also be added at the last minute.
I kind of like the way it is with the five days, is there any big reason why we want to go to three days?
Again, my goal is five, but I'm really the only person that does it. If I'm out or there's somebody that comes in and, you know, I have meetings all day, then I'm not there to do it, and there really isn't anybody else to do it. So, again, my goal would be to get it done in five, but it just gives me a little bit of leeway.
Three business days prior to a regularly scheduled meeting, I mean, if we're meeting on Monday, Saturday, and Sunday not being business days.
Right, it would be Wednesday.
On the Friday, Thursday, Wednesday, yeah.
It's Tuesday. Five days is usually Tuesday if we're looking at.
Well, we'd be looking at Mondays by mid-morning.
But we're not doing that.
I'm trying, but it hasn't happened.
I'm fine with it is. This, this no flash or lighting which may be distracting is permissible, it's at the end of the paragraph where we talk about the executive session, so that's really, that line ought to be up, probably talking about regular meetings, because obviously, there's not going to be any actual lighting in the executive session, so that ought to be up probably after this program.
I have a question about the posting of the agenda you talked about, giving a copy to the newspaper, the other newspaper certainly was not printed, so is there any point in making sure the newspaper has it?
They like to see it so that they can plan whether they need to be here or not, so we send it to them and it's up to them to decide whether they want to post anything about it in the paper. And we did add, by the way, a bulletin board outside of our office, they're posting them in the courthouse, bulletin board downstairs, but that can be fall and hard for people to find, so we have put in a closed bulletin board outside of our office for posting the agendas as well.
The second question is, I was going to say, where do they post it in the courthouse?
It's downstairs on the bulletin board, there's a lot down there.
Along with everything else.
Probably have to put another sign, the site says blue.
Well, and again, I hate to have a meeting kind of disallowed because somebody couldn't find the agenda at the courthouse, but maybe, does it need to be at the courthouse?
Yes, it does, by state code it needs to be, so we need to post it there.
I just had one question, page five, the second paragraph in the bottom, start with citizen appointments, goes on to talk about the handouts being unacceptable if they've not been included on board docs one week in advance with the rest of your materials.
We would change that to three days.
Three days, okay.
If we moved to the three days.
So that's not going to be a separate?
Right, it won't be a separate requirement then.
I'd like to point out to the public that it also says, I'd like to bring enough copies for the people in the public and the members of the board, so if you don't get it into the administrator's office in time, you can still present, I just bring plenty of copies.
So is this something we want to go ahead and adopt now?
It's certainly fine with me if you want to go ahead and adopt it, it will need to change to our ordinance, because what's in black is in our ordinance, so we'll have to work with art and either change it as part of the ordinance or make it a policy, one or the other, but you can certainly vote on it today or from the future. But you can certainly vote on it today or from the future.
So I'm going to vote on it. I'll make a motion to vote on this. I guess the only real change would be moving the line status up to the regular meetings.
Pre-business days.
That's all we're on, right? And then, of course, the other pre-business days to coordinate. So I'll make a motion to vote to change this. So we need to discuss if it's going to be an ordinance or a policy, one or two?
Do you have a follow on that, or do you want me to talk about?
I think policies is probably better.
I would think so.
Yeah, that'd be less work. So let's, you know, let's just adopt this as a policy.
It's one of the new policies.
Revised policy. Yeah.
Well, right now, it's an ordinance, so the ordinance would have to be terminated, and then we would put it in as a policy.
We'd have to advertise that, wouldn't we?
Yes.
So we can adapt it to the... We could advertise, we could both advertise it. But we have to do something, right? So I'm making a motion to vote to advertise this, to change the policy.
I'll second it.
Motion made, the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Motion carried.
The appointment policy?
Is this something we just created?
It's not something that's been in effect. We've certainly had some processes in place, but this is documenting what they are so that we are insured that we follow them each and every time we have an appointment. And this talks about the notification process, that the notice should be given to the individual whose term is expiring approximately one month in advance. And we will advertise regardless of whether that one person wants to come back or whether there's no one. We would advertise so that people are aware of the opening. We would advertise the applications as being accepted two weeks prior to board meeting. If someone wants to be reappointed, then they should submit something in writing. There is an application that's very simple on the back that I put together that says that you are a citizen of the United States, and whether there's any other boards or activities that they're on for which there may be a conflict, and how we can get in touch with them. And this also talks about what we talked about at the last meeting, that if an appointment is district-specific, the supervisor of that district can make a recommendation. Otherwise, when not district-specific, any supervisor can make a motion.
Along those lines, on this application, if it says, oh, you're a citizen of Orange County, you should also ask for the magistrate of the next... In that way, we would know when you came in.
Districts, if it's...
Yeah, I think it should say, oh, you're a resident of Orange County instead of citizen. They're already asking if you're a citizen of the United States, and I don't even know if that's required for certain positions. Because some certainly require residency, and others would require, things like the board of supervisors require a copy. Are you saying it's redundant to ask them if they're a citizen of, or resident of the county and the United States?
No, it says, a citizen of the United States and a citizen of the county.
It should be resident of the county.
Yeah, I think it would be more important if they're a resident.
Exactly, yeah.
If they're a citizen of the United States is one thing.
I had a couple of questions on number four, past the deadline. So if an applicant submits their letter of interest past the deadline, but prior to the board supervisor meeting, the appointment is scheduled, one, applicant's information will be posted on the county's email alert notification system at least two days prior to the board supervisor meeting. Or, the board supervisors will defer the appointment until the following meeting. My concern here, and maybe it's worded okay, but I don't want a late entrant to have the ability to stop the process and penalize those who have, you know, been timely in their application. Maybe the word four is all right in there, between one and two, but maybe that doesn't. But I don't want to be obligated to have to defer the appointment until the following board supervisor meeting if the applicant submits a letter of interest past the deadline. So I don't know if that's semantics or...
No, you're right, John. And one word that could change is where it says the board supervisors will defer, you could put in May. And then that way, it's less...
Because they're maybe extenuating circumstances.
There may be...
Maybe a death in family, or they may be ill, whatever, so you don't have...
I think you should have the flexibility, but I would just suggest replacement of will with may.
Ask me that. I would be fine with that. I don't know how the rest feels.
I have a question about same paragraph, the posting on the county email alert notification system. I'm not clear exactly what that is.
Well, I had hoped to have something in place, and we haven't had a chance to do it yet. But we do have a distribution list at this point that we're sending information out on. And I would like to set up a notification system so that we can let anyone that wants that information to be able to get it, to whether it's this, or road closures, or whatever. I think we need something to notify everyone about upcoming events and potential disasters and that sort of thing. So we could even end up putting the notifications out about openings for our boards.
Right, well, it's a little bit awkward, but we don't have that up and running and having it in a...
We have a distribution list. It's hard to call it an email notification system at this point, but it is a distribution list that we do have.
An email correspondence with Ms. Kaiser, I brought it up, same thing that Mr. Lenny brought up. We don't have, we don't have this type of documentation for employees. We have hired people without job descriptions and without advertising pieces. And we certainly don't have any HR tools in place in case we want to get employee evaluation of jobs. And I really think this is a critical part. These voluntary, you know, volunteer boards and commissions are part of our workforce. I have to agree with Mr. Lenny on that as well. But yet with our salarying employees, that has the potential of costing the county money, we have nothing in place. Kind of like something we need to work on, how many county employees do we have?
Yeah, it's eleven of employees that...
Well, I think that the number that Mr. Lenny was using was the constitutional officers below.
We have no control over them. And I've had some discussions with them. And I don't know if they're interested in being part of the county's policies, and we cannot expect them to do that. So we have eleven, and as we have hired, we've tried to do the job description so that when somebody's coming in, you know, they're coming in and being prepared. But you're right, there isn't anything there, but we'll get there. It's just going to take time to develop some of those things.
Chairman, I have a question. I just got a little confused.
Go ahead.
So, the employees that are below constitutional officers, are you prohibited from dealing with them? Those are part of your count, right?
I have, there's eleven people. There's Candy, and there's Richie.
Oh, I understand.
And Marlena, and it's that group, and Ricky Jenkins, and that's all the county employees. The sheriff is a constitutional officer, and she has her employees, which is one of the largest groups. But we have no jurisdiction over those employees.
Or the record, my numbers reflect that, is that all those?
But they're employees sometimes, like when you're talking about health insurance benefits and things like that.
Right.
Stipends and the list. It's long, maybe in that direction, but as far as direct supervision, they don't belong to the county.
So there's really only eleven.
So, you still have the point of, are the constitutional officers following good practices, do they?
We can't control that, but I would agree. I think it's in our best interest to try to do that and provide them with the tools, and then they can choose to use them or not. So we can provide them with a blank job description and the right format, and they can choose to use it or not. Or the same way, I'm sorry to interrupt you, with performance goals, sheets, and that sort of thing that they can choose.
Of course, the best performance evaluation for constitutional officers is the first Tuesday of every November. I mean, ultimately, that's kind of what, you know, the people, which is probably where it should rest, give the ultimate performance evaluation. But I took notes. I hear you on some of your other thoughts. With respect to these volunteer boards, and I know we're going to get to the library board here in a minute, but I found it very helpful to have a letter, you know, from the head of the library. Basically, this, not so much a performance evaluation, but a recommendation is that that I don't think they would have given to certain individuals if they hadn't attended meetings or been contributing. So, you know, there's that vehicle too.
Well, I've had issues with that as well. We've had, like the Reverend, Reverend, Reverend DMS Council, we had that individual basically send us a letter to have the directors reappointed, and that's not their place.
But it probably is their, it might be their place to give their opinion on performance.
The directors have to do a job performance if that person is just sending you a letter recommending them to be reappointed. So it's kind of like a conflict of interest there. That's the way I look at it. The employee basically is asking this board to appoint somebody that they give a glowing recommendation for. You know, this, this kind of works really well.
Is this something we're going to act on, eh?
You put it on the agenda today for discussion, I believe.
So, other than changing the will to May, are there four?
And the application?
And the application to reflect the magistrate of the district and call it a resident, a citizen of Orange County. It's kind of like we're, we got something we can work with here.
I'll just go back and state my concern that I expressed earlier, and that is, if this does look like a new policy, there is not a policy like this existing, correct? This is new, okay. So even if you go down to the agenda, under appointments here, under number two, it says, you know, there'll be a couple of appointments here that are going to be advertised for February's appointments on the planning commission and building appeals board. So if we don't have, there's a policy like this, what is there? Just an accepted understanding that this is how we'll proceed?
Right. This has been a process that has been in place. It's just not been a normal process.
Well, this is much more, this is much more formal in that we're advertising and we're actually actively...
Right, you have not always advertised, you have not always advertised for each position.
I'm still struggling a little bit with the county email site. I hope soon you can potentially...
I don't know. I was hoping to have it up one before now, so I don't know. So I can call it a distribution list at this point.
Right. I feel better about that than somebody asking me, where's the county email or county site where I can see this?
Yeah, to Mike's point, again, also to my point, I just want to make sure everything is squeaky clean and transparent when it comes to people knowing that we, you know, we're going to be doing, we're going to be doing this, advertising and taking on interested persons for these positions before we actually have a policy in place. We feel confident that we have everything, you know, that we need right now to make sure that we can go forward and ask for applicants to this position, including the incumbents, that we do it every day by the book and that everybody knows that that's the procedure. I don't want to get, I don't want to get called on this board and get called on the fact that you're not doing something, something the right way.
I think we're trying to fix something that's not normal, or whatever board it is. If the city member is not terminal, and they ask to be reappointed, the board is done. It's just, it hasn't been an issue. And with today, with the library board, it looks like we've got two city members that want to be reappointed. You've got one open position, and we have one resident that submitted something, the other person's not a resident.
Well, I don't have a problem with this policy that it's written, and the way we're going to go about doing it. I realize that might be a little bit different than the way we've done before. I'm only, I just want to be sure that we're having a conversation that if we're going to do something, if we're going to do this, and it is different than the way we've done it before, that we can do it before this board votes on it. I'm a little bit technical here, but you get called tasked for not putting this, you know, not being a ticket.
You want to use this before it's been adopted? That's what you're saying?
Well, yes, in so many words. I like the way this is set up. You know, we have a couple of word changes here.
But do these two, do these, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no.
Do these two city members know that they need to reapply? In this process, I mean, if they didn't know that, I got a letter from Mr. Slate because he's in my Jackson district that I represent. I don't know about Ms. Davis. She's over around the Fessy Bell Mountain.
She turned in a letter.
She, she turned in a letter. If we don't require that, it's possible that in one's complacency, they assume they're going to be reappointed. They don't express any interest. You're thinking that, but then maybe they decide not to reapply, and we're caught without a candidate. So for that reason, they, they have, to have them reaffirm the fact that they want to, they want to be reappointed. Well, right, I guess, I mean, if they lose track of the fact that their term is just running out, maybe somebody needs to notice something, I guess they have a secretary going on these boards.
I don't want to be making a decision whether I'm going to advertise or not for a position. That shouldn't be my call, should advertise or not advertise. But I don't want there to be questions about, is somebody going to come back? And it's late in the game, and do I advertise? I have to advertise two weeks ahead of time. So let me know. If you're not going to advertise, then we need to hear something from the respondents that are currently serving. So, and I think there's people that want to come on the boards, and you get some turnover. And if you don't advertise, and people don't know about it, then they're not going to, they're not going to apply. So, I mean, as a board, you can choose to put back on whoever you want.
It's probably a good idea to advertise, and probably a good idea that anybody that's interested, whether they're incumbent or not, notify us to that extent. Just so that we know what we're dealing with. So, so what will we do today? We postpone these appointments until...
If we just, I think it'd be enough just to have a consensus that we're going to use this policy with a few little changes we've made.
But if you're going to start requiring this, I think you better have more than a consensus.
What would you suggest?
Well, I think it should be approved, unless, if it's a policy statement.
Well, do we want to set a date from which this will go into effect?
I hope we thought the idea could go into effect today?
Today, or?
It has to be unanimous if you're gonna.
It, it has to be unanimous, if we take action on this, it has to be unanimous that it'd be raised as an action item. I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and make the motion that this policy, as amended, as we discussed, be put on the agenda as an action item this afternoon.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion made in second, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
So then we put it on the agenda for this meeting, and that's my thoughts.
Then we give these people an opportunity to apply?
Well.
Or we go ahead and make this appointment?
Well, the library board has already advertised, they do the advertisement. And we've already, you said that you've received something from Mr. Slate, I didn't have it to form board docs, but, um...
I already know how to, how to do this kind of fax duty, but I don't know how to make the machine.
But hers is on there, so we have hers, and then we have the letter from the director of the library stating that they want it to be reappointed, and he recommended them. So I think that the library board is fine the way it is. If we adopt this today, I think that they've met the criteria, it's been advertised.
All right, well, I guess we'll move on to the next.
Next time.
So you're not gonna make this?
Yeah, we can make the remarks.
The library board.
Yeah.
Budget, budget scheduling for year seventeen?
I know that I'm being redundant, but I don't want anybody to miss any of the deadlines, so I'm passing this out. This is a schedule for internal departments and outside agencies. I did add on February the ninth at three thirty P M. to have a tourism presentation, which we had last year, so I've added that again. And I want to make sure that you have those dates down. And then also, this is scheduled coming up for the joint board meetings for the school. And so March twenty eighth is going to be the joint, the joint board meeting, so I want to make sure you put that on your schedule. And also April the twenty fourth, so they are out there and available, so you can put those on your calendars. And then Mr. Welch contacted me today, we have a meeting on January the ninth for a budget workshop, and he is now going to be out of town, he's got a family emergency that he needs to go out of town for. So that makes Mr. Parrish and Mr. Welch unavailable. So would you like to have the meeting on January the ninth, or would you like to schedule it till maybe the last weekend, or the last week in January? It would be like January twenty third, twenty fourth, twenty fifth. Mr. Parrish, I don't believe you'll be back yet at that point, but Mr. Welch will be back.
If we schedule for the ninth, then I can get up and leave, and leave you guys hanging.
You could.
I'll have to do that. What's the other day?
My plan ahead.
January twenty third, twenty fourth, or twenty fifth? Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of the last full week in January.
And this would be from when? This would commence at ten o'clock?
That's what we had before, was ten o'clock at the library.
How long of a meeting do you think this is gonna be?
Two hours or less, it's long-term budget planning.
I could do it from twenty third to twenty fifth.
So that's Monday? The twenty third, I can be available the twenty third?
Are you available the twenty third, Mr. Parrish?
Yeah.
Mr. Parrish, are you available that Monday, the twenty third?
I think so, it gets rougher later in the week.
Okay. All right, I will schedule that and send you a notice, and schedule the library. To the library board, there are three open positions, one to replace Ms. Janet Davis, Chris Byrd, and Stephen Slate. With Ms. Davis and Mr. Slate desiring to be reappointed, Chris Byrd does not wish to be reappointed. And we have a number of applicants that are available. We have a Marcy Brandon, an Ellen Gore, and a Mr. Kerrigan that have applied. And their information is posted on board docs.
I noticed Mr. Kerrigan, I don't know, but he's not the resident.
They have property in Hampton, so they're, they come for the weekends.
Well, I was very impressed with Mrs. Brandon's resume. She is a librarian by, by career, and has advanced degrees to be a librarian. A lot of experience. I was, should put it out there that I was very impressed.
I agree with you.
She's in your district.
So why don't we reappoint Janet Davis, Slate, and, and put Brandon on there. Brandon, so I'll make a motion.
Davis, Slate, and Brandon?
Right.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
I agree with you.
And no action needs to be taken on the next island, but it's just to let you know that appointments to be advertised in January, for February appointments to the planning commission, the building, the building appeals board, which needs to be an engineer, and then the community services board. Um, we have a...
Our board.
The planning commission has an opening, we have to turn our votes this time.
There's an opening, there's an opening position for the Hampton District that comes up on, federally, which was the reason I was having the conversation earlier about wanting to make sure that we followed procedures properly, so that the planning commission...
Anybody interested will, will note it in the resume.
I know the incumbent is still interested, I had that conversation just been had. Uh, if anybody else is interested, I think we want to find out if there's anybody else interested. The idea is we need to advertise it and respect the deadlines that we have established here. But we don't have a policy yet. Do we have a consensus to do it this, for the next, do we look this, this way?
I think so. This is far as I'm concerned.
I would have put it the other way on the, on adding to the agenda, but I didn't know what you were gonna do with this library board. I thought that we wanted to get that out of the way.
So there's consensus to, on the policy, for me to go ahead and follow it for the next month?
Yeah, I just, I just didn't want something to happen, and folks didn't know that they needed to apply that way, you know, and suddenly, but that thing we can say without being reappointed, and not in the running at all.
Well, Mr. Golf, is there any reason that we can't bring that motion back forward, even though it's been defeated earlier in the meeting? Or do you have a clue if we're doing that?
You can move back, and demand the agenda. I say let's just wait till the next, I would mind reviewing it again.
Okay.
Uh, and we'll just wait, and by consensus, you can still appoint somebody, and it's been, it can be advertised.
This one will be back, so. Okay, but we have a consensus.
All right, we have a consensus, we proceed, as if we had, as if we had.
For the purposes of these three appointments, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I think everybody is.
I'm good.
All right. So we're, uh, past the...
We're past the delinquency.
Art, do you want to do that one? Art, I mean the tax delinquency, but you, you want me to do that?
Sure, sure.
Um, this is, at the request of the treasurer, Mr. Luke researched the validity of a tax delinquency shown by her records on two of the three buck reference lots that are situated in Chester Gap. He goes through the history on those, and he requests that this delinquency, including all penalties and interest, be abated, and that you adopt a resolution certifying the contents of this report to the treasurer and to the commissioner of revenue for appropriate correction of their records. So as you can tell, there's a long, a long list of information that's here, and, um, due to the issues that have been involved with the lots, that the taxes aren't on to. I want me to read them off then? Okay.
So do we need to vote to extend on that?
You do, and it needs to be a roll call vote.
So I'll make a motion that we proceed to, uh, rectify this information in accordance to what the administration was proposed.
That was seconded.
Oh, you made it second? So roll call vote, Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
Mr. Lothensky?
Aye.
You're ready?
Aye.
Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Rappahanna Reverend, Community Services, funding for four fifteen passenger vehicles.
We agree to add this to the agenda today, this is for the purchase of four fifteen passenger vehicles with chairlifts. Um, this is not anything that needs to be funded by this board. They are requesting money from the state of Virginia, but they are asking for our support. So with your consensus, I'll write a letter on your behalf stating that we support this initiative.
I think we're fine with somebody else's number.
I'm okay with that.
I will move forward and do so.
Do we need a motion?
It's a consensus.
Yeah, I think that consensus is fine.
All right, Candy, the administrator, update.
Were the signs up today, when you were leaving?
Check, it's been a year.
Um, they're, they're to be up this week, and we're hoping that they'll be up between today and tomorrow before the snow gets here. But we did get the information from VDOT, so Mr. Jenkins knows where to put them, so your sign should be up and done by Thursday at the latest.
Thank you for ordering up.
Yeah, we, Ricky was gonna try to do it today. Um, I have a number of updates that I wanted to give you, just to give you an idea of some of the things that have been going on. Um, I've had two homeowners of large estates inquire about conference centers, and that doesn't mean the big buildings and, you know, twenty thousand square feet, but in a zoning ordinance, that refers to a bed and breakfast that allows for large events. So we've had two of those that have been in that may be applying. Um, there is a rezoning next month that'll be coming before the planning commission, and then before you as a board for property in downtown Sperryville from village residential to village commercial. Um, DEQ has been in the area, there was a complaint, we went out to review the property, which resulted in no violations. Um, I've had a couple consultants with a number of people regarding campgrounds that they're interested in putting in, and hotel cabins. So I don't know if they'll move forward or not, but definitely lots of interest and lots of work on their part. Uh, we had our normal year-end activity with increased in activity for flats and subdivisions. Those people that are wanting family subdivisions can only do one per year, so they split them between December and January, so it creates extra activity in the office.
We, the, the board had stated that we want a planning commission to be, to find a platform on those to help with tracking.
Okay.
We should see those, Ben.
Okay, we can get them to you at the next meeting. Um, when the board talked, we talked about, um, the zoning permits, and that we wanted to look at anything that was going to increase the footprint either out or up. So we have implemented draft zoning permits, um, which we have been doing, and hopefully I'll have a couple of recommendations for changes when I bring that back before you. In the meantime, in the last two months, um, I've approved forty, approximately forty zoning permits that wouldn't have been done previously, um, that are coming in, that we're looking at setbacks, and we're looking at heights. So, um, that's in the process, and, um, we haven't required them, but we are doing the process as a draft, as this board has not formally approved them yet.
And not to put you on the spot, but this thing about the fourteen percent slow, or fifty percent demand, does that come up in the list?
No.
Something we are gonna, okay.
Yeah, I'll be glad to look at that and, um, report back to the board.
What was it that you said the board had formally approved, what?
I had the amendment chart that, which is different than the one that we're doing for the planning commission.
But that, that's not really an amendment, that was just a clarification, because the zoning ordinance requires it already.
Right, but it was a change of process, and it hasn't been formally adopted or put in the ordinance yet. So I've been doing it as a draft, we're doing it, but, um...
I, I, uh, it's already in the ordinance, it doesn't need to be adopted, it's already there, we just, all we had said is that we wanted it to start happening.
Are you talking about the requirement of zoning, in addition to government?
It's already required in the zoning ordinance, it just wasn't being done.
I think that's a matter of...
That's the order you're doing, is alright.
It's not a matter of interpretation, the zoning ordinance, planning states would be done, we just, we had said we wanted it to start happening. And I, I thought that's already what we're doing.
Well, we are doing it.
You are doing it.
But, um, I didn't take it as a formal approval, I just started doing it so that we could start tracking it and processing.
I don't see where it needs a formal approval, if it's already in the ordinance.
I don't, I, I agree, I, I think the interpretation was different, and I think the board needs to have a consensus to change pass through.
I think it's comfortable to have, uh...
It's another, it's a tool, it's a tool that's already in there, every county around us that I've checked would use it there. If we give up that tool, we'll regret it, we'll regret that.
If, uh, okay, well, we can discuss that.
I thought we already had.
No, not, not thoroughly, uh, if somebody has, if somebody, uh, has a zoning permit in place on which they built their house, for example, and they want to, and obviously they had a building permit at the same time, they had an inspection, they had a home lock permit, and then subsequently down the road, after fifteen years, they want to add a screen to the porch, I don't think they would necessarily be required to have another zoning permit. That's already been established.
Somebody has to look at it for setbacks, who's going to do that?
The, that, the building inspector would, uh, would look at it for setbacks, because obviously that's gotta be, uh, when they get their, uh, building permit, uh, they want to have a little plan, they want to have a plan, they want to see at that point, uh, for setbacks.
You, you're gonna have to start enforcing your ordinance, or you're gonna have to change your language. Mr. Luke told us that years ago with abandoned vehicles, and this board didn't do that.
But we're, we're talking about, uh...
It's the same, it's the zoning ordinance.
Right, and so, yeah, and I just, that's my question.
When this board, when this, I hate to remind you, and be the dead horse, but when this board improperly took thirty-eight thousand dollars, which morphed into a little over forty thousand from Amistad Fire Department for something that our contract did. The statements here, the statements at the time where this board has to follow its ordinance is even though it was the board that violated the ordinance. Not Amistad.
I don't want to...
We're talking about...
No, we're not, we're talking about following our zoning ordinance, following our ordinance.
Yeah, and I'm saying that, that this thing with the, we need to clear it up, because it's ambiguous.
It's not ambiguous, because it's the same language that other counties use, and they do it exactly the way that we, we discussed. It's not ambiguous because it's the same language that other counties use and they do it exactly the way that we discussed it needs to be done. And the planning commission was fine with, with the idea of, of you're enlarging the footprint or going higher. But if it's a, because the current language is if it is a soil distribution or it involves the health department. So if somebody wanted to finish a basement, for instance, if you didn't have a bedroom, then you wouldn't have a zoning permit. But if you put an addition on or the screened-in porch, something that, that changed the footprint, then it became a zoning issue because you had setbacks or height restrictions that you had to look at.
That's going to. Not on the agenda today, so.
And I, and we also have an adaptive use that we need to have a public hearing on. So I'll bring all that back next month for review. Under human resources, we received twenty-five applications for open executive assistant position. I interviewed about six folks and we hired Ms. Len Tommcello as evidence here today. So welcome, Len. Thank you for being here and helping me out. We'll be holding happy hour to wish Candy well upon her departure. That'll be the last Friday of this month. Location to be determined. We'll open it up to the community. So you can keep that on your calendar. From an IT perspective, I'm pleased to report that we have our first documentation of our IT systems. It's a good place to start. This will assist us with troubleshooting that we have in the future and it needs to be much more complex. But again, it's a great place to start. I won't be providing a copy, a copy to anyone due to security reasons, but we do have it available. So it'll help with our IT structure. We still have a couple of items left to do this year, and I hope one of those is our email report system. In case you missed it, Comcast was installing lines for the Supreme Court and cut our telephone line. So we were down for two days. Ricky Jenkins was a great help with the crews, letting them know where some of our lines were. And it took Comcast and CenturyLink a full two days. And people were calling and they were getting a busy signal. So I guess they thought we were busy when in fact they just couldn't get to the phone. The landfill, the new hours for Flatwood will go into effect this coming Monday, the ninth. The Rapid Hannock News had an error in their reporting and indicated it would be closed on Tuesday and Wednesday. And it really is Tuesdays and Thursdays, that it's going to be closed. And I have a little piece of paper in the back that has the new hours on it if you'd like to pick one of those up. When we leave, there will be signs to indicate the new hours this week. There were no changes to the hours in the Amistad landfill. And the landfill gentlemen are working on signs to improve instructions for our citizens. And we have gravel that is going to be delivered in the next couple of weeks. Parks and Rec, we need to have a meeting. We haven't had one for a while. Candy's leaving. She needs to be replaced and she's also the treasurer for that board. And we also have a ten K race coming up. So we'll have a meeting shortly to review all of that. Peter Luke and I had our second meeting with Bay Corp. to review their insurance coverages. There's more things that we need to follow up on if we decide to put it up for an RFP or give notice. We're required to give notice by April. So we're continuing to work on that and see if it looks like it's worth putting an RFP out if we can get a better rate and better coverage. I'm still working on the RFP for the Amistad landfill for removing the wood debris. And the legislative session is just around the corner. I have signed up for all of the legislation that is being introduced to be sent to me. That's around thirty-three hundred bills, but I want to make sure that we don't miss anything that's important for Rapid Hannock County. If you'd like to be on this distribution list, I'll be glad to send them to you. Otherwise, I'll just enter the lines that I think are important.
I would like the ones that we are going to be.
Yeah, we have not, I've not seen anything with that yet. So I agree. I'm keeping my eye, eye out for that one as well. The Tourism Committee has been resurrected by a local individual and they'll be developing an action plan and making a presentation, as I mentioned, within the budget section. And then the last thing that I had on my list was by doing the minutes and going back and listening to the videotapes, it is very hard to hear everyone. And I know we've had comments from the public. Is there interest in looking for a microphone system? If so, I'll do some research and get back to you at the next meeting.
Well, was that included, projects?
It did.
Yeah, very good. That takes us up to information and then closed session is needed.
Okay, the information that's available, the first item is the Bay Corp. Region seven. This is what our region is working on and keeping track of as far as the new legislation. So, so that's a big. That wasn't somebody that built it. Okay, good. So this is. Yeah. So this is what our region is looking at and concentrating on as far as legislation is concerned. So if you have any comments, you can get back to me on that. The next item is a reminder that your conflict of interest statements are due by the fifteenth of this month. So. Yeah, make sure you get your stuff before you leave. Roger, you probably need to do yours before you leave as well. The building permit report is included. There's guidelines for enforcement and civil penalties for the Virginia Animal Shelter, which falls under the sheriff. We also have a Comcast notice that says that there will be three channels that will be expiring on December the thirty first for all of our residents. And I also included our regional Rapid Hannock Rapidan report, should you be interested in reviewing that. And then the next item was the closed session if needed. We do not need a closed session. The next court date is January the eighteenth for Brad versus Rapid Hannock County. And I don't think there's anything else that we need to cover.
I have a question for the Rapid Hannock Electric man. I see there's, I think there's some work being done there at the substation in Sperryville?
Yes, we are upgrading the substation there at Sperryville. This has been a plan ever since we acquired the whole Allegheny system to upgrade that station.
Is there any new plans for upgrading the power lines too?
That's my knowledge. It's just happening.
That's all they've done, some going down to thirty-one Parkway.
Yes, from time to time, we do go in and upgrade the lines, repairing mostly crossarms, replacing poles, replacing the lines if needed.
So it's not really an expansion of the.
It's not expansion. It's, it's just, I think it's reliability is what we want it to be.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate you seeing through our meetings.
Okay, I'll make a motion with you.
Uh, we need to recess. We have a public hearing tomorrow. At seven P M. regarding the Vamar Library. And then our agenda does say January the ninth budget meeting, but we changed that today to the twenty third. And we'll place that on our Board Docs.